Dearest members of the House, and I am here to declare 2014 the following order, head to the news station. I'm Marty.
Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us here tonight, that we might be able to perform our duties to the best of our ability, that we might hear the citizens and understand what their complaints, their good wishes, concerns are about. We ask you to please help us in any decisions that must be made this evening, and that you will send us a blessed Fourth of July as we celebrate our country's freedom. I write here to proclaim our faith and our pledge to you. We ask these things in your name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call Mike Kelson, Mike Trainer, his absence. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. Consider and act upon approval of the following minutes during a city council meeting May 1st, 2014. I think only Marty and...
And the minutes are incorrect. New business was actually the minutes from the April meeting. As far as I'm concerned, I cannot approve the May's minutes because the new business, April F., followed along the agenda for the April meeting. And they were not the things that happened at the May meeting.
You defer that to the next meeting?
Yeah.
And may I correct some of those directions?
Yeah.
Okay.
The first part of it was correct, but then, once we started new business, it was exactly the April meeting.
Okay. Special council meeting, May 16th, 2014?
It's also incorrect, too. There wasn't a form there.
Can we call? Can we ask a special meeting even though there was no form? So we didn't really have a meeting?
I think you can have the votes, right?
You didn't have to have a meeting. It was just a canvas of the votes.
Okay.
And it needs to say that one minute.
Yeah, so should we not say that there was not a form to have them? In the minutes?
I was here on that day, but I don't think it's necessary for you to have minutes for that.
For that, okay.
There should be a minutes. It should just be a canvas. That's it.
Next item on the agenda is a regular city council meeting, June 5th, 2014.
Mayor requested amended practice. He gave it to us. He gave us the amended three-day advance where we can review, or we want to sit here and review it. Meeting matters.
You think?
After reading through, I see no problem. If I have to read them.
That motion is approved, Mitch.
I'll make a vote.
Motion by Lindsey M. Frerdy.
I'll second that.
Do we have a second by the House? All of the fairies say aye.
Aye.
All of the folks? Motion, Chair. Next item on the agenda is a special council meeting, June 18th, 2014. Pass on that. Council reports stating on council member Lindsey M. Frerdy.
I'd like to correct some things that were said at our last monthly meeting that I didn't really get to respond to. In the past, citizen speaking in the citizen-to-be-heard portion of the meeting were used to having the mayor or a councilman comment on items that were brought forward. The new attorney has instructed this mayor and council to answer with no comment. Now, if a citizen makes a statement that is not true, it needs to be corrected. The Texas Municipal League Handbook states that limited verbal interchanges between citizens and council members are inappropriate, and a council member may respond with a statement of factual information. That being said, yes, the citizens of China Grove did bring this up quite a bit last year, and they did not like the statement of no comment. Because the previous mayor and council did allow verbal interchange with the citizens, and would correct them if they said something wrong or informed them that they would take the matter into consideration. If necessary, would put it on next month's agenda and discuss it in the next month. Mr. McRae brought up some things that I did not get to respond to also. First, he said that my flyer requested that the mayor and council act upon items and the people speak proportionately in the meeting. This is not true. You are mistaken. My flyer addressed not being able to talk on the agenda items. You remember, that was also not allowed until the April meeting, when a motion was made and passed that had the agenda sign-up sheet. We still felt that was a little bit too restrictive, and that was changed at our last meeting. He also stated that the city saved $50,000 due to the city not having an administrator and another $50,000 on assistance. Does he think the city secretaries are working for free? I don't know what kind of calculator he is using, but he's not even close. This kind of statement cannot go unchallenged. The city actually lost $6,449.08, and the city office is in the mess. We have had three different secretaries, not to mention the court clerk. They cannot handle their job. Not one secretary can prepare an agenda without the assistance of an attorney. Therefore, the city attorney has prepared and reviewed every agenda this last year. Now, I'm not just saying these things. I'm surely not using my greatest calculator. A remark was also made about apples and oranges. Well, when an apple does oranges' work, it becomes an orange. Here's the facts. Salary for the fiscal year 2012-2013, this is who we had as city administrator. City administrator's salary was $47,940. Had an assistant that she helped with the secretary and with the deputy court clerk made $12,000 a year. The deputy court clerk made $19,788. That is a total of $79,728 that was paid in salary for the secretary and court clerk of 2012-2013. Now, this last year, fiscal year 2013-2014, it ended. No city administrator. The city secretary is being paid $25 an hour. On average, he worked around 29 hours a week, which comes up to be $37,700 per year. The deputy court clerk is paid $20 an hour and works 40 hours a week, which comes to $41,600 a year. Plus, she worked 48 and 3/4 hours overtime at $30 an hour, which just comes to be $1,422. That is a total of $80,722 per year. That is $994 more for those two than we had for the three years before. Plus, they couldn't even make an agenda. They had to get the attorney to make the agenda. He charged $5,455.08 last year to make all this. He was doing and making the agendas. That's $454.59 per month just for the agenda, to make the agenda that we have just right there on the table. He had those two together, that's $6,449.08 that we are in the hole. These are the facts that came right off the payroll records. I don't think we're going to be able to pay very street losing money. Also, in Kathy Rady's statement, we were accused of using the good old boy method in appointing Susan Conway for the city administrator position. My understanding of the good old boy method would be hiring someone you know who is unqualified for the position just because you want him in that position. If considering her for the job because she is the best qualified and has the most experience as a good old boy process, well, she's probably right there. Susan has worked for this city for 29 years, knows all the ordinance, and has made this city run its day. She has made it shine. The reason you are going to get your streets paved is mostly because of her. She has helped save this city money through the years, working with the mayors, finding the best interest of the banks. Also, serving this project manner, this city hall that we built right here probably saved us over $100,000 in her deal. So, she has worked for five different mayors who have depended on her to write agendas, ordinances, and to explain the ordinance, as well as dealing with many other city policies and problems. She is very knowledgeable on the Texas Municipal League Code. She worked as administrator and secretary, managing the city's office, implementing municipal court. She started this court in our district. She went to school and found out how to do it as she started. Got everything working. She helped and trained many councilmen. When you become a councilman on this, in this city, where do you go to? You went to Susan. She's the one who gave you the information. She told you what you could do and what you couldn't do. So she answered questions, and she helped everybody that was ever elected to this city council. Everything was working fine until we had an harassment from one councilman. She had to resign on her duress because of the harassment from this councilman. She notified the mayor what she was going to do, and then she had a regular call meeting. She got a letter of her resignation. She explained why, and that she could not no longer work for here. She helped a temporary secretary that took her place with phone calls, text messages, and how to proceed with things in this city. Now, this council is no longer here, and considering the way things are right now, she is willing to return to her previous position. Current staff is receiving top pay, and they are inexperienced and have no knowledge of the city operations. They don't know the ordinances and have committed numerous errors. Susan can not only save us money by preparing agendas and ordinances, she can do a lot of the work that attorney charges $185 an hour for. I can see why the public attorney wouldn't be reluctant to fill this position. Great deal of this services would no longer be needed. We are $30,000 over budget of attorney fees this last year. $30,000. Remember, Susan, this is your tax dollars that the mayor is spending. Council members have an obligation to do what is best for the city, and that is filling the city administrative secretary position with the most qualified, experienced, and eligible person as soon as possible. This council is a hands-on council, and we will work with the administrator and with appointments and the removal of officers employed employees. This council would like more in what is going on in our city. Working with the administrator and hiring employees, removal employees, salary employees, hours employees, and things that affect our budget. This council would like to be more involved, and maybe we'll counter that. We need more control of the city's money, not let the mayor make all the decisions by himself. We need an administrator to run our city. This council did an injustice to the mayor when they gave him the city administrator's duty. He was just voted to the mayor's position and was having enough problems doing that when this council gave him the job as also the administrator. This is very unfair. He has no experience running the city. He had listened to the wrong people telling him who to hire. He's been paying a high salary for inexperienced people. I think that he has been taking advantage of it. Our city was running great when we had an experienced administrator, so why don't we get back while it was working? So therefore, I ask that this position of city administrator be advertised in a newspaper where we'll be able to appoint a city administrator as soon as possible. Thank you.
Just a few corrections for saving by the mayor. One, the attorney approves the agenda. It is normally written by the secretaries that we have. Second of all, the prior secretary was asked to stay on. It was not to my knowledge, didn't, that she would not. And I was notified at the last minute that she would not stay on, even in a transition phase, and refused to help. There. According to the figures that I have, we were still able to maintain or increase our cash inflight by $135,000.
You asked, tell me if you enjoyed those streets? Another correction, the mayor said that the attorney only approves them. On his bill, he says viewing and in addition to, not only just approving.
That's the end of my statement, and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Mike, you got the list? Can I have your list? First person to sit down to speak, Gus Burn.
You see, Mayor, are we going to go through the stack of reports? Or are we going to public speaking or not? Or do it after?
You will.
Oh, okay. That's fine. We can do it after. Do it after, Dave?
We can do it after.
Mayor, city council. I can get you all moving, Gus Burn. We have heard over and over and over again about city streets. I've heard that now we're in the process of getting fixed. The city engineer said if we procrastinate going to August-September timeframe, the city of San Antonio is going to gobble up all these contractors out there, and we're going to be left out of that field. But for the past three years, all I've heard is, three and four years, the street is going to be done, the street is going to be done. Well, people tripled. They look at me every time I come to a meeting. Police street's going to be done. I'm coming out of town. I can't answer. We don't get a direct answer when this project's going to begin. But that... Engineer said right here about two months ago, that my target date is July 1st to get started. So I'm proof we're standing over there waiting on a start date. I don't know. I've been coming here for so long without this law's face, and everything has been said here. And that's just the deal I'm thinking. You know, if you can't, if you promise something and can't deliver, that's pretty sad. Thank you.
Lucille Kassler.
Okay, Mayor and city council people. My name is Lucille Kassler, and I have mentioned this before about raising taxes in China Grove before. I would like to say why. If I understand correctly, taxes have not been raised for seven years. Seven years ago, the gas fee was probably a dollar down. Now it's over $3. Maintaining the vehicles in the fire department and police department or higher, we need to consider inflation. Some subdivisions were put in by developers who faked the streets. Now residents are responsible for maintaining the streets. More streets need required maintenance. The sales tax was raised a little, but we should not expect the small businesses to take care of our community. We, as residents, should take on more responsibility if we want our community to be kept at any level of higher standard. My husband and I pay $180 a year. That's $15 a month, which is probably more than, which is probably what most residents pay. Most people spend more money, get that, eat out, movies, sporting events, vacations, and I ain't gonna let you fear any cigarettes. I think we could do more. Some people have expressed that they would like recycling in China Grove. Instead of doing street piecemeal, streets piecemeal, we could do them faster and take care of the ones that are going to need repair in the future. Let's let people know why it is important to raise taxes and let the residents vote. Let's hold our community at higher standards. And I would recommend that we call Susan Conway back if she's willing to come back.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, the financial secretary.
And the petty cash is $100. Petty cash from municipal court is $43.90. Red off books, $1.59, $7.54, $15. Red off books for savings, $5.05. Security service, $6.15. Security service, NCD, $1.60, $474.97. Techstar Bank, $14,503.37. And the checking is $109,017.71. Techstar National Bank savings, $141,061.02. Wells Fargo Funds and Markets, $156,282.27. This is a total of $7.52, $0... I mean, $7.52, $39.50. For municipal court, cap out the city, we have $3,621.98. To the state, we have $3,198.12, and a total of $6,801.12.
And the council has a detail there of the checks and the budgets.
Mayor, I have a question. It's showing here that petty cash from municipal court is negative, but not that we have $43.96. So does it need to be reimbursed?
Yes, it will be reimbursed.
Okay.
It's coming from $100, and then somebody came and paid. So I'm going down for that.
Mr. Mayor, I have something to say about the secretary, the temporary secretary that we have. Concerning a problem I've had with her, if I'm to amend this. I give her an agenda item last week, and...
It's not on her agenda.
Well, I have a problem. I need to talk to you about this, about this attorney.
I can talk to you.
Come on.
I can talk to you.
I'll talk, because I want to talk to the council about it.
You can't discuss an item that's not on the agenda.
I'm just the secretary that we're talking about now. I have a problem with the secretary.
We've taken your report. We're not talking with the secretary.
Good. This, we've got the secretary right now we're going to talk about.
Not on the agenda. Not on the agenda.
I'm understanding things there. I'm an elected councilman. Why can't I bring something up and talk about it?
Mr. Frerdy, I've got it.
I tried to put things on the agenda. That's what I wanted to put out there. She won't accept it.
I understand that, but you guys understand that that's not the agenda you want to go to.
I understand that, but I'm, that's the same thing. How can I put anything on the agenda when she won't accept it?
Right. The Texas Open Meetings Act requires that you post a notice every two hours before the meeting, giving notice to the city of what you intend to talk about. If it doesn't make it onto the agenda, then it's not on the agenda and you can't talk about it. But if you want to talk about it or not...
I tried, and she wouldn't take it.
I understand that.
Okay. Now, I will...
If you talk about it now, you would be violating the Open Meetings Act.
I don't agree on that. We can bring up anything. I can talk on anything, and the council meeting is not a brand of anything.
Yeah.
Okay, can I just add to that a little quickly? We did have things on the agenda that are not put on, but I talked to Mr. Rips, and he okayed it and approved it, and it was posted out there as it was supposed to be with the correct time. And I did sign it according. I told Mr. Rips I would do that, and he told me to go ahead and do it. I got it. I called up here the next morning to find out if the board had received it, and she did, and she was going to get back with me, and I didn't get a phone call. I came back up here, and it had been removed. Now, I know for a fact through TML that each member of the governing body should be allowed to place items on the agenda and that neither the mayor... and that neither the mayor nor the city manager controls what is placed on that agenda. Now, I have been violated as a councilman. And I wanna know why. Can you answer that for me, please?
The short answer to your question is, uh, the chapter twenty-two, my local government, if you want to have a special meeting.
It's not a special meeting, sir.
Let me answer your question. Three members of the council petition the mayor, him writing, and Mayor must call the meeting. Okay? There's only one agenda. You do not have council policies and procedures. You never adopted any. Historically, the mayor and the city secretary prepare the agenda. The mayor does not put an item on the agenda. That is his discretion to either put an item on the agenda or not to put an item on the agenda.
It is not. It's discretionary according to you. It is not.
When I had a phone call from you, I was told it was one councilman who requested the item. I found out the next day that...
I called after, I came up here on Monday and found out that that our agenda was not on there.
Even if he had done that, it didn't, it was not posted to the agenda.
Mr. Vineyard?
That's not my fault, sir. I posted it. The board should have put it on here.
Talk about it unless it, unless it was posted.
It was, sir.
I, I don't agree with you.
Mr. Vineyard, I have a, uh, opinion for the...
I have a whole lot of opinions that I can share with you.
Well, mine is not on the agenda.
This is the proper time for raising these cases. And if you wanna talk about an item on the agenda, you can talk about items on the agenda only. But if you wanna talk about other items, then you're violating the Open Meetings Act.
I understand you. We tried to put things in there. They don't take it.
Mr. Parton, you spoke to me about it. I completely understand.
Are you the lieutenant attorney of the city or are you just with the mayor?
I'm the city attorney.
You act like you're just representing the mayor. I don't think you're representing the city.
Parton, the, my client is counsel, the city counsel of the city of China Grove. And it's in an awful meeting, which has been posted with seventy-two hours notice. And you have a coroner present. That's who my client is.
Okay, sir. Then why would he give you the permission to do it and then pull it off?
You'll have to ask him.
Why, Mr. Rips?
It's not in the original agenda. And we're revisiting an item that was already decided in the prior meeting.
And why did you have the decency to call me, Mr. Rips, and let me know that? Why did you have to let it go this far? I am very displeased with your actions. And I have lost all respect. Because this is the things that have happened before and it continues. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Now, we get on with the meeting. Police department, Officer Jenkins.
How you doing, sir?
Good evening, everybody. All right, y'all good? This is my first time, so I'll be a little unsure a little bit. Did y'all want me to read everything that's, that happened throughout or is it redundant or are you ready?
At this point, we haven't made a motion, so you can go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So we had seventy-nine citations for the, for the month and twenty-seven call calls. On the first, we had a burglar vehicle, Highway eighty-seven. On the fourth, we had an animal welfare across the road, which was a dog that I saved. Sorry. And on the fourth, we had a dead animal on Triple Branch. And on the fourth, also a co-compliance on Triple Branch. On the fifth, we had a welfare check. On the sixth, we had a burglary, I'm sorry, a business alarm on, uh, the rest of Highway eighty-seven. And on the seventh, we had a business alarm on Highway eighty-seven. And then on the night, residential alarm, Triple Oaks, on the night again, a reckless driver, which I couldn't find. Uh, on the tenth, we had, we assisted a burglary of a building. This is one of our first burglaries that we had written down. Uh, and then on the, the tenth, also, we had another carabina, a burglary of a building. On the eleventh, we had a co-compliance on Foster Road. On the twelfth, we had a car accident. Uh, on the twelfth, also, again, we had a business alarm. On the fourteenth, we had a snake that had been shot. And on the fifteenth, we had an injured animal. On the eighteenth, we had another co-compliance on the airbinder. On the nineteenth, we had shots fired in the city limits again. Uh, on the nineteenth, we assisted the other, uh, outside agency of, of vehicles on fire. This was just right outside the county line on, uh, fifteen, sixteen. Uh, on the twentieth, we assisted the other agency with a disturbance at, on Highway eighty-seven. On the twenty-third, a suspicious vehicle, uh, which was on Triple Tree. Again, I, I couldn't find that. Uh, the twenty-fourth, a co-compliance. On the twenty-fifth, we assisted the other agents with a fire on Triple Oak. Uh, this was a transformer that blew up with lightning, after lightning. On the twentieth, twenty-fifth, we had a civil standby on Real Road. And on the twenty-fifth, a dead animal call, twenty-sixth, a reckless driver on Triple Tree. And on the twenty-eighth, a alarm and a business on Highway eighty-seven. Okay? Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to know what the co-compliance was on Triple Branch.
Triple Branch. And the one on the sixth fourth?
On that number twelve, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. That is the one at thirty-three or eight, Triple Branch. And it was a co-compliance for nuisance, rubbish, and old cars and things in the front of the property. We understand you've been trying to dilute that problem for, for years. So she has been given a citation by me now.
Thank you.
And, um, she will appear at court otherwise if not, uh, an warrant will be issued for her arrest. Uh, it was certified later sent to her because it afternoon, it was your time, it was going through her door, knocking, she would not answer. Okay? So this is what this is. I believe this, yes, this is the Williams.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you doing that and finding the source of our...
Yeah, they dodged me on a lot many times, so we just decided to go ahead and give them a certifier.
Enjoy your job, Doc.
Yes, 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 yes. So we're trying to do our best. Um, there's so many tasks to learn and so many to refer. So we're, we're doing it right now. Down to a one-man show here. I'm in.
You're doing a great job too. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. On that interior, the side one we pulled out, eighty-seven.
Yes, ma'am. And it survived.
And it survived, yes. And Mr. Russell, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When are you writing the violation of the nuisance condition that existed next to my property? From November sixteenth nineteen, uh, two thousand and thirteen, that's when the letter was written from the city of China Grove.
Right. As far as I know, that's all impending. It's been, it's all been brought up to, to the mayor. Uh, the mayor is basically working on that situation.
Seven months now.
Okay. Well, as far as I know, it's just been brought to me within the last couple of months.
Okay.
And that he is actually working on it, trying to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Sorry.
You put it right there.
Thanks.
Great job. Thank you.
Mine?
Good evening, council. All right. Lovely report, China Grove Fire Rescue for the month of June. Call calls for the month of twenty-six, we all, every two point five total man hours. Of that, structure fires, we did one. Accidental fireworks, two. Motor vehicle collisions, one. Assist the public, one. Fresh responder calls, these are medical in nature, twenty-one. Acadian transports from the city of China Grove, one. Calls for the areas, calls in the city of China Grove, were six. Calls in the county unincorporated area, were six. Mutual aid calls, fourteen. Brief summary of calls in the city of China Grove. Six twelve, eighty-one hundred block, Highway eighty-seven east, case number two zero three. Medical call for bleeding on fourteen, sixty-nine hundred block, Highway eighty-seven east. Case number two zero five, a medical call for toxic ingestion. On the eighteenth, sixty-seven hundred block, Highway eighty-seven east. Case number two zero seven. Medical call for unconscious party. On the eighteenth, sixteen hundred block, Highway eighty-seven east. Case number two zero nine, medical call. Bee sting, swam the bees. On the twenty-fifth, seventy-seven, seventy-six hundred block, Triple Oaks Drive. Case number two one six. Burn transformer fire, start my lighting. On the twenty-sixth, eighty-one hundred block, Highway eighty-seven east. Case number two one seven, motor vehicle collision. Burn ban was lifted back in early June. Again, remind the citizens of China Grove, we do have ordinances in place for tangi open burning. We do have to obtain a burn permit that is done by call, either to myself or the ladies there at, uh, city hall. And basically, it's all prevalent on weather conditions for the day and for that time. But again, if you'll call, uh, we'll definitely work with you and, because we know people gotta burn. So, uh, again, it's prevalent on weather conditions. Uh, also, I must remind everybody, fireworks are prohibited. Discharge, possession, in the city of China Grove. Ultimately, you wind up in a citation and confiscation of fireworks. Uh, also, I'd like to inform city council that the last two evenings I spent at Commissioner Tommy Atkins's office. I spent a nap with, also with Kyle Pullman, who's emergency manager coordinator for Bear County. Also, attendants were fire chief, Lono, running the government, and their vice president of their board directors. Uh, board director, the president from Harmony, their fire chief, Adrian Del Toro, their assistant chief. And basically, the first meeting we were called into, uh, it had to do with emergency service district. Gardendale Fire Rescue is emergency district, district number ten. They are going to be taking over the Camelot area. Fire marshal office put Camelot out of business and sorry to say, but Gardendale was the last resort because they offered everybody, including us, and everybody turned it down. Gardendale picked it up. Problem being is, that area right now is not an emergency service district. There is no money coming in. So basically, they're trying to merge their ESD ten over there, which will have to go to election and all that. They agreed to do that. Bear County Fire Marshal Office has agreed to allow them also to take in Woodcrest unincorporated area. So they got the dust because they wanted us, and I say us, that includes Lono Fire Department, Harmony Fire Department, and China Grove Fire Rescue. They wanted us to merge with their ESD. Uh, and I'm happy to say we turned it down because, uh, with us three merging out here, or the ESD out here, there's quite a bit of substantial amount of money available as far as emergency service district goes. And we felt that they're a bullionist over there because they need to get a shot at the environment as far as money. But we were also informed at that time that, uh, because the three departments out here are the last holdouts as far as not getting ESD. Last night at the meeting, we decided that we are going to form a emergency service district. And it's gonna be Lono, Harmony, and China Grove in our unincorporated area. So I just wanna give everybody a heads up that this is coming. It's going to be a very large emergency service district. We're trying to work out all the details because realistically, the fire marshal's office and emergency manager coordinator really want one fire department, three stations is what they truly, truly want. And like I said, right now, we're just ironing out details. Uh, we're trying to get the law rolling on this. But it's, it's gonna come to be that there's going to be an emergency service district. But again, Bear County has said that they're not in the fire protection business. They don't think they need to fund it. The people need to pay for what they get, the services they get. And so this is what it's coming down to. I just wanna give everybody a heads up because we might see a lot of motion over here and things like that. Uh, next Tuesday, we have a meeting here at city hall, and I'd like to invite the other fire departments to come down. We'll come over here and, uh, we need to start mapping out a plan of what we're gonna do, our pattern attack. Uh, we're going to try, and I don't know if we're gonna be successful, to try and get it on the local ballot. Uh, but already, we've been losing a lot of roadblocks and hurdles, but, uh, we're gonna trudge through it. But, you know, and then we'll be, it's going to happen. And, uh, like I said again, I just wanna give everybody a heads up on that.
Thank you.
Mike, since Gardendale, next day, you're neutralized. Are you able to neutralize their Camelot?
No, sir. No, I'm sorry, sir. I'm not speaking. If they call us, because they'll usually agree with actually all the firearms in Bear County.
But you don't have it automatic?
No, it's not automatic, no. Basically, we would be like on the second or third alarm, uh, with them, with Camelot. We're on the same thing with Woodcrest.
Right now, like, Lono can, uh, that could hurt on back the...
Automatic neutralizer, sir. Lono, Harmony, St. Heather, and Gardendale right now. And, uh, but we, like I said, we're on the second or third alarm with Camelot or any of those out there.
My persistent raise in taxes for inside China Grove?
Inside China Grove? No.
Residents?
The residents of China Grove will not be affected by this. Now, if you were contemplating maybe, you know what, you don't wanna fund the fire department anymore. This is your opportunity right now to opt out of funding the fire department and then that's closer to emergency service district in the city. But I'm gonna be honest with you, what we have works real, real well. And I'm a firm believer, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
And it will raise everybody's taxes.
Yes, because we are going to go after the maximum in the unincorporated area and all the other area, which is ten cents. Legally by law, we can do that. Anything above that would have to go to a vote. Uh, and again, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing the same thing also with, uh, Elmen Grove. And basically, what it's gonna come down to is, we're going to have to have a contract with the city of China Grove. And then we'll also have a contract with, uh, Elmen Grove. Because they feel the same way. They really don't wanna get into another taxing entity coming into their city. And we understand. And again, this works out real well for us. China Grove is taking real good care of us. And we have no complaints, no problems with the way things are going right now. My guys are happy and I'm happy. Hopefully, the citizens get happy with the service we're giving. And again, you know, it's not broken. It's not my business.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Item number one on their new business, considering act on a rebadies personnel policy for the city of China Grove.
Can I make a suggestion that we have a workshop to discuss? Because while I was reading it, I came across some questions and things that I didn't quite understand, uh, thought maybe it needed to be worded differently. And since we had just gotten it last month and we've now had a chance to read it, could we table this issue and possibly set up a workshop in order to just discuss this possible handbook?
Yeah. Need a motion to table it to?
I need a motion to table the handbook until we can schedule a workshop. And then, at my review, be able to, uh, put it back on the budget.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And second from House. All of the papers, say hi.
Aye.
I'm opposed. Motion carried. Item number B, discuss and consider reducing the fire and police reports to a more condensed form without case numbers and report more on lumber rather than every event.
The fact of that is, we're liking, we appreciate all the hard work and give us your reports in your detailed manner. But because our meetings sometimes are lengthy and there's a lot these days to discuss, uh, we were thinking it might be wise if we just got your tolls from you, unless there's an event or something that really needs to be brought to our attention or to the citizens.
Yeah, you're a buffy, guys.
Just, just have the report turned in to either Latoya or whoever, and then we'll have it in our packets.
That'll work.
And that's also for the, where's Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Jenkins too?
Okay, great.
Okay, do we need to make a motion on that?
I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think they know what you want.
Okay.
Item C, on their new business, considering act on shutdown of tree posts due to defective construction as detailed email from the accounting and environmental services. These are tree posts?
Yes.
How was this?
How you doing?
How you doing? Well, as we, as we last talked, I don't have any, the county doesn't discuss this with me. They send y'all any type of deal. We've complied with everything that they have asked for. We've, you know, gotten our maintenance agreement in place, as I showed y'all in the last meeting. I don't have any communication with the lady that wrote the email whatsoever. They have been out there. I'm assuming that if they haven't discussed it with y'all, then there's not a problem.
They haven't sent us anything, I don't think, no.
Has anyone made an attempt in the office to call and do any research on this? Just general. That's why you have a paper behind you. That's a, from that paper. And then it's. Well, that's the old one, though. That says, not the email, but the other paper. Okay, is that in reference? I thought that might have to do with the seven seventy-five. Because this one says seventy-five, seventy-five. Is that your address, sir?
No.
No. Oh, that was, okay. I didn't think this had. Now, he was supposed to last me, and he was supposed to bring something.
No, wait, hang on. There, there's no way that I was supposed to bring anything. I, I agreed that I would come before the council, but there's no way, I don't have any way to bring it. I brought y'all a copy of the contract, okay? That was the compliance. That's what I was under compliance. I brought you a copy of the, of the contract, but I have no communication with the county. My dealing is strictly with the city of China Grove. So, as long as I'm in compliance, I don't see why this thing can keep being.
In the letter you turned in, you said, it said you were in compliance?
I didn't turn it in.
Or whatever.
The letter I turned in is, is I turned in the contract.
Of the contract.
Of the, of the maintenance agreement. Of a maintenance agreement. And that's what we, that was in, that wasn't in compliance since two thousand and eight.
Right.
Now, I've only owned this business.
I'm very sure of that.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm, we have complied. We have upgraded the system. We're not true upgrading the system, but our system meets every requirement of Bear County for their standards today.
Well, what we need to do then is have our office staff follow up on that. Would you bring Mr. Rips?
Yes, I'd call Bear County, let them know what you.